Good evening. We're going to go ahead and reconvene the July 6th Board of Supervisor meeting. We had thought we were going to be going into a closed meeting. We did not. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that, and Supervisor Fraser should be here any minute. He was having vehicle difficulty, I believe. The next item on our agenda will be the public hearing, Swindler TM number 42-4A Conference Center. And we do know they're on Zoom. I don't know if we want to go ahead and let --
Michelle, yeah, Michelle can provide an introduction, and then if the applicant has anything to offer, they can share, and then you can open the public hearing.
Thank you. Jimmy and Elizabeth Swindler wish to operate a -- or to offer their barn as a venue for weddings, receptions, anniversary, et cetera, as a conference center pursuant to 170-36C and 170-64G. The property is located at 698 Laurel Mills Road. It's zoned agricultural, and it's 50 acres in size. About two years ago, they hosted their daughter's wedding, which prompted this idea. The Planning Commission did a preliminary review on this application and also held a public hearing. They voted to recommend approval of this application with the following conditions: up to 12 events per calendar year, all music to be played inside the barn, all events to conclude by 11:00 p.m., compliance with all local and state regulations, the permit terminates upon the sale of the property, the application as presented, and an event is defined as 20 to 150 guests.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, just for the record, to be clear, this public hearing was advertised pursuant to the requirements of the Code of Virginia, 15.22204, and the similar provisions in our local ordinance. And I want to point out two sections of our local ordinance that pertain to this and other special exception or special use permits. Those are Rapid County Code, Section 170-47C. Uses which would normally not be allowed in a particular zoning district may be allowed by special permit or special exception because they impose conditions and restrictions on the use in order to make it compatible with the by right uses in that zoning district. And Rapid County Code, Section 170-47G, a special permit or special exception will only be granted if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of this Article 6 and the proposed use is otherwise lawfully permitted. The burden is on the applicant to satisfy such requirements. With that preamble, I think it would be appropriate to open your public hearing -- oh, after you hear from the applicant, sorry.
Yes. Mr. Swindler, are you able to hear us?
We see you unmuted, but we cannot hear you, sir. How about we proceed to public hearing, and then maybe he can sort out his technical issue.
All right, that sounds good. Mr. Swindler, work on your sound. Hopefully, you can hear us, but we cannot hear you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
And Madam Chair, this is Kier Whitson. You might just point out that there should be a telephone number that he could call if the online Zoom connection isn't working, I believe.
That the online -- there must be something with his microphone, but good point. Telephone connection might work better for him. I'll type that in the chat here in a minute.
All right. We'll get that to you, Mr. Swindler, in a minute. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the Swindler Conference Center application only. Anyone wishing to speak, please come -- be recognized, come up to the mic, give us your name and the district you're in.
Not everybody wants --
Yes, really. There's nobody in the courtroom that would like to speak. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to this application? Not seeing any hands in the Zoom world either. Are you good with closing?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on this application and allow the board to hopefully ask questions or not with the Swindlers.
Madam Chair, this is Kier Whitson. As you know, I'm chairing the Planning Commission this year, and I can tell you that the applicant came in with a very thorough application and answered a lot of questions from members of the Planning Commission. I'm trying to pull up -- I've got the vote sheet here. I believe it was unanimous that it, in support of this, was a recommendation for approval. And yeah, in fact, it was seven to nothing. I think the applicants have gone out of their way to work with Ms. Summers, to, as she described quite well, to pivot from a one-time event at her property that seemed to not have any adverse effect on anyone and not worked well, to kind of a plan for a retirement type business on a very, very small scale, up to 12 events per calendar year. I think it's a strong application. They've talked with neighbors. There's no opposition. They've got a proper layout for the barn where they would have these events. It's situated in such a way that it seems that no one would be affected by these 12 events per year. It seems like a sensible and reasonable use of their private property. They've come through a lot of groups, and I think with that, just to move our discussion along, I would go ahead and put forward a motion that we approve this special exception permit for the Swindlers as described in our meeting package.
Could we hold off just a little bit on that? Because I don't know that we've had enough involvement from at the board level to --
Sure. Okay. Yeah, no problem.
Because I had a few questions to ask Mr. Whitson, and apparently there's no one to ask.
I think they're trying to use the phone.
If I could, if I can have a minute or two, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
When the barn was approved in Sperryville for events like this, it was a -- we had a site plan. I was on the Planning Commission and the board both at that time, and we had a site plan that showed that there would be a clear avenue around the barn so that you could get emergency vehicles up to the barn in case of a fire or other emergency. And I don't even see a site plan here, but this -- trying to work with this iPad tonight is not actually in my favor. But I see photographs, a barn lot, driveway, worker parking, caterer, all this, but I don't see an actual site plan that shows parking or that clear space around the barn in case of emergency. And here we are, at the same time that the board is talking about creating an ordinance or strengthening our ordinance with something about ingress and egress. We're about to approve an event center that doesn't show us any of that.
Fair point.
Unless I'm missing something.
Well, we'll look at the materials here. No, fair point.
Oh.
And I think Ms. Summers is -- who knows the application quite well, so if she can lead us to kind of photographing and other information, I may be able to do some.
Well, I think, you know, if we could, if we could entertain, maybe if we're going to adopt anything, that we would -- it would be contingent upon a final site plan approval by the Planning Commission with those requirements in it, that it, you know, show parking and basically a lane around the facility in and out so that we would have, you know, constant traffic flow in case of emergency.
Yeah, it'd also be good to get the applicant, hopefully online shortly, because I think he can talk about this from a real-world perspective. I mean, Ms. Summers, if we talk about any site plan that might have been discussed with the applicant, you're view of that, since I think that's within your discretion. You require one or not?
So in this case, I did not require a full site plan be done. He -- the applicant had mentioned that, you know, there's plenty of open space there for parking in the field.
Sure.
And the Planning Commission also didn't feel at that time that they felt it was necessary either, but --
But this is something we've required of others, and I personally would like to see something like that. It could just be the plat.
Sure.
They could do it themselves. It wouldn't require anything more than just following the scale that's on the plat and show where they have the parking, reserved parking, overflow parking, and some sort of how they plan to address the issue of traffic flow for emergencies.
Absolutely. And that could be made as a condition of the permit as well. Absolutely.
Okay.
Because it looks like they have pictures, but they don't have the site plan.
Correct.
And it's something that we have required of others, so I don't think it's out of line. But it could be something as simple as the plat. It's just, you know, penciled into scale.
Absolutely.
Are we still trying to connect with Mr. Swindler?
Yeah, I believe they're connected by telephone. I believe they need to press star six to unmute, as I'm trying to understand.
Okay. How about now?
Hey, Jimmy!
Yay! Thank you.
I'm going to go over to the other side of the room so I'm not conflicting with the audio that's coming from the computer. Sorry about all the difficulty, people. I don't know what my laptop has been. My standby is present, but it failed me the night this day somewhere, hijacking my bride's MacBook and my cell phone and trying to make it work for you all. Thank you for your patience. Still going.
What, there's a --
Yeah, Mr. Brager, maybe you could jump in and --
Yeah. Mr. Swindler, what I was saying is that when we approved the barn in Sperryville for events, it was part of the package that there would be a, basically, a lane kept open all the way around the facility for emergency vehicles to get in and out. And we don't have a site plan from you. And so I would like to see this contingent, you know, if there's an approval tonight, it would be contingent upon a site plan, which could be your plat, and it just drawn to scale, you know, with a pencil, you could do it. But just to show where you're going to leave an area for ingress and egress, both all the way around the facility and in and out of the property.
Yeah, that would be optimal, and if you all are willing to, you know, approve the contention upon that, that's -- we have no objection to that whatsoever. I'm confident I'm probably not going right now. But I'm more than confident that there's more than enough room with the driveway that we have in place, which is a circular driveway, by the way, that loops around by the barn. But there's enough room on either side of that driveway, flat, where it's easy. I mean, because honestly, my bride and I meet each other on that driveway quite often, each going in opposite directions, and we're able to sit around each other. But I understand the need for a site plan, you know, a site plan that I can put together, a circular driveway. I got no problem with that. I just won't be able to have it to you until the week of the 18th, probably, of this month.
You would just have to do that prior to any use for the permit to be issued, right?
I would think so. Either --
Listen, listen.
Either approval by the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission.
Yeah, assuming this does go forward with success tonight, I can assure you, we are much away, perhaps in the form of six to eight months, at least, from hosting it. Now, we have a lot of work, you know, on our end of it that we haven't done because we wanted to see how this process, the disponent process, what I'm told. And once that's, you know, where we can move forward, then we will. So don't, you know, you don't have to worry. There are no sets planned. There's no -- we have that contract drawn up for people to sign that. So we're fine there.
All right, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah. And Mr. Swindler, this is Kier Whitson. Yeah, Mr. Brager brought up a good point, because separate and apart from your application, we're currently at the Planning Commission responding to the Board of Supervisors' request, considering a zoning ordinance for VIG and to ensure safe emergency vehicle traffic in and out of any kind of event. So he appropriately, I think, said, well, you know, even on a standalone application like this, if we're headed in that direction across the county for all kinds of events, certainly we should make sure that your application covers the same ground. So your application and our zoning ordinance amendments sort of collided, so to speak, at around the same time. And so I think appropriately, Mr. Brager is asking very reasonably to make sure that you're in line with what we're doing separately. So thank you for your willingness to accommodate us in this regard.
Well, absolutely, and I appreciate you explaining that. But yeah, we're more than happy to put forward whatever it is, you know, reasonable. This is definitely reasonable. I mean, I'm thinking, yeah, this would be a good idea to have this in place, because it could be me that lets people come to the floor one night. So I want to make sure that we'll have it.
We're open up, so.
Yeah, we don't have to, but yeah.
I think Mr. Fraser had other points.
No, that's pretty much it. I'm sorry both for being tardy and for my voice. So that's pretty much the concerns that I had.
Okay.
But the board can make a determination as to whether they would want to --
Well, I'll go ahead and expand my motion to require a site plan or a similar drawing to demonstrate that there's sufficient ingress and egress to the event site. So it's a recommendation for approval of the special exception permit with those addition, that additional condition.
So, Mr. Whitson, does that include -- restate that. Does that include the Planning Commission recommendations, or?
Yeah, incorporated by reference.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. What motion on the second discussion?
I guess we need to determine whether it'll be a zoning administrator or a planning commission. Somebody, I guess, would have the -- this positive function.
So by code, the way that process works for a special exception or special use permit, the zoning administrator can make a recommendation to the Planning Commission during their process of what parts of the site plan might or might not be needed, and then through their process, they can validate that and move it along. I presume that's what happened at that stage. If it's a by right use, then the zoning administrator is empowered to make that decision. If they've moved, if the Planning Commission's moved that along, and it's okay for the board.
Now that this is a condition of the board.
Well, then, I guess you can lay that on anybody. But if it sounded like Mr. Swindler doesn't have a time issue, he's not going to be burdened by waiting for a Planning Commission meeting. But certainly, the pleasure of the board, whether staff --
Well, I think the zoning administrator knows what we're talking about, so she could do it.
That'd be my preference.
I want to make sure that it's known, it's a known item right now, how it's going to proceed.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly wouldn't want somebody to think that, well, it's required, but who's going to do it?
Right.
Great. Are you comfortable with that?
The zoning administrator, that's fine. I mean, you see what I'm trying to explain.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I would just say, I think it's enumerated in the Health Department. All food prep and cleanup is to take place off-site. Any caterers hired, permitted by VDH as required. Wouldn't that these conditions be included in the rental agreement? I saw that sort of peripherally referenced in the application, but I didn't see it dialed in in the application or in the Planning Commission vote sheet. And I just thought that might be worth capturing as well.
That is more detailed than compliance with local and state regulations, and it probably would be appropriate to incorporate the Health Department's specific recommendation.
I think that we should incorporate that. Is it agreeable to the applicant?
I'm not sure what you're asking. What I think they're asking is that every time there's an event, whoever puts on the event, whatever they did with their caterers, if we did, they would need to check what they have to follow, and make sure how the regs are being followed, so forth and so on. Is that what you mean?
Yes. It's in Medj Carter's recommendations, dated November 19th, 2021, number two. All food prep and cleanup is to take place off-site. In the event, the -- in the event a caterer is hired, the caterer must be permitted by the Virginia Department of Health as required. These conditions are to be included in the rental application or rental agreement. So that seems, it seems like something that you alluded to in your application, but it wasn't quite that specific in that.
Well, we, I have no problem with being more specific like that. That's fine. I mean, that's what we were -- I know it certainly would be part of the application. I mean, the last thing, obviously, this turns out to be something that's reasonably successful. The last thing we want is to host an event, 50 people end up in the hospital. Nobody ever want to come here again. So yeah, not the problem.
Absolutely.
As far as requiring that of our applicants.
Thank you, Jimmy. Jimmy and I appreciate your willingness to enumerate that as a condition of the application.
So --
No worries at all.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Whitson, you're willing to modify your motion for approval to add the three VDH comments as conditions of the permit?
Sure. We'll just incorporate by reference to the three VDH recommendations. And then I already mentioned that you're prompting the Planning Commission conditions, so it has two sides of conditions, Planning Commission, VDH, that are not part of the motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. We have a motion of second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swindler.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you all. Thank you for putting up with our technological inefficiencies. And Michelle, I'll be in touch when we get back.
Okay. Have a good trip, Jimmy.
All right.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Now, we're moving into the public hearing, my MTM number 50-31A. Ms. Michelle.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Ryan have applied for a special exception for more than one dwelling on a lot or parcel pursuant to the RCC 170-36A for their property located at 530 Eagle Nest Lane. It's 87 acres in size. The property is zone conservation, and it is in an outdoor easement through the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. The proposed second dwelling will be for their son and grandchildren as we can get away. No, Mr. Ryan has checked with the Outdoor Foundation, and they have no issues with this permit being sought for a second dwelling. The Planning Commission reviewed this application on May 18th, and they voted six to one to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve this permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to read the sections again, but again, referencing your materials are Rapid County Code 170-47C, 170-47G, upon which the board's authority to issue permits in these situations is not required, but is possible. The applicant has anything to add?
Well, a bit of history is that our one-bedroom cabin there was, we sort of rescued from a field barn in Rock Mills, that we were happy to have there as our cabin. And then as part of the easement, that we worked with the Outdoor Foundation probably 30 years ago, we asked that we reserve the ability to then construct without having grandchildren at the time, but for our son and family and/or grandchildren. So that's how history has moved along. And the first thing we did before arriving here was to see that the soil around there would be possible for a septic field. And low and behold, on the east side of the ridge is some pretty deep soil. On the west side, there's rock. So it's interesting, the geology of the ridges and especially the valley belt. So that's why we've applied for this special exemption after we had talked to the Virginia Outdoor Foundation and after we actually had a soil analysis done. So here we are.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing with regards to this dwelling on a parcel of land, Mr. Ryan. Anybody wishing to speak on this particular item, please come up to the mic, give us your name, your district, and we're waiting to see your hand in the courtroom. It's an easy crowd. Not seeing anybody in the courtroom. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with regards to Mr. Ryan's application? Not seeing any hands in Zoom. I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion.
So I just have a quick question about, I see in the picture where the proposed site is, it looks as though, as you just mentioned, so your log, your cabin is on the, more towards the western side.
West, yeah.
And so it looks like it's towards the eastern side, so you can put a drain field in there.
Yes. Well, the, not too far away, and one of the considerations is, we would rather not drill another 700-foot well. So I think the flow that we have probably could accommodate our small family, unless the grandchildren decide to just turn the water on and see how the water will run. You never know. So that, you know, that was the consideration of that.
Mr. Whitson, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I think we, Planning Commission posed a lot of questions, and I mean, I'm comfortable with the application. And obviously, the file's pretty lengthy, so I encourage everyone to take a moment, if they haven't already, to just at least review the staff report, in particular this, to make sure you understand where we're at it on this.
What is the size limitation on the second dwelling?
There's --
None?
No.
Even in the conservation easement?
Well, that's a fun, that's a private matter between him and the easement holder.
There was a, the Outdoor Foundation was concerned, mainly concerned about any heating, I think. But in comparison to the 87-acre parcel, it's probably small.
How big is the existing structure?
I think 1500, I want to say 1500 square feet.
I'm not sure if Mr. Whitson can hear you very well, that far away from the mic.
Do you want to come? Thank you.
I can, I can hear you. It's not far. Thanks.
So you were saying 1500?
Yeah. The field, it's interesting, field barn is 16 by 32-foot long, bamboo chest of logs. And so that has been the, sort of, the imprint of most of the, most of the structure.
So is your current cabin, did you find a drain field there?
Yeah.
But it's not rock, or is it back?
There was a little swale on the west side, thirty-plus years ago, that the fire was happening for one bedroom. I'm not sure that, actually, you know, it's not, I want to say, no, we've never had any issue with it.
So you're thinking that this cabin will be, or this second dwelling will be a similar size as the one that --
Yeah, two bedrooms, a bit, maybe a bit larger. And then the septic field will be on the west side of the ridge.
Yeah.
And so I was pleasantly surprised that we went down 600 feet and did the soil analysis there, and which would be, was it emergency or secondary type place? And the soil is --
Where's it?
That's interesting, going up there, laurel grows on the ridge and on the west side. There's almost no laurel on the east side. And so the geology and the geography and the biology is quite a bit different along the ridges.
So in doing this, residential uses are by right in an ag or conservation zoning district, but they're restricted to one dwelling per parcel? And so what this request would be to allow them to have two dwellings per parcel and access to all -- access to all those by right opportunities that they would otherwise have for one?
It looks like you did an assembly to four lots for VLF to be treated as one.
I think so, when the initial, we, yeah, we did buy, we bought some additional parcels there and assembled it, and then there's another piece, another parcel further down, which is also, that was also in conservation easement at the time. Also, I think we've been reasonable stewards of the U-SAD and the tomography of, it's hard if you're down at 522, it's hard to see our place. Other than the red roof, I may, I may have to, if we do a second one, a green roof. I mean, not a...
Not a green roof?
Not a green roof, but color green, so it's even harder to see.
What's that dark color, umma?
Uh, yuma green?
Yuma green.
Like the town.
Forest green.
Yeah.
Forest green may show up.
Yeah.
It may show up.
I'm not sure the color, but I think I know what the chair is talking about. We messed up with the pole up there.
We learned.
I'm sure, just if folks haven't read it, I think the cover letter to the application is, it's heartfully put, is only Mr. Ryan could do, and I think it puts it in context of something that we heard about earlier today, and that's having young people coming back to the county. And I think that's the spirit of this, and I really, I think it's the right thing to do here, I mean, plus a per parcel, it's, we're not splitting, we're not agreeing to split anything up, we're accommodating private property, and I'm having their children back, that have a place that Mr. Ryan and his wife have taken quite well, is special and important to them.
How close do you think it would be to your current house? Did you...
Probably within two minutes of my four-year-old being able to get there.
Pretty, pretty close.
I think so, pretty close.
Four-year-old legs.
Yeah. I mean, just pacing off and looking at the sign, he's, they're two hundred, three hundred feet, something like that.
And if I'm understanding it correctly, you're kind of rolling the dice on the well and hoping and praying that it hasn't changed since ninety-three.
Next block, seven hundred feet down is, and we've had the pump replaced so far.
And three gallons permitted is reasonable for typical residential use.
Yeah.
If you don't leave it on.
It's greater than that.
I've done that many times. Well, I agree with Mr. Whitson in the sense that anytime you can get family back, and especially young folks, that it's a positive thing. Absolutely. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve SE 22-0501 with the conditions.
There were no conditions recommended by staff, I don't think.
And we didn't...
They're restricted by zoning ordinance, et cetera, for the structure and building code.
And the outdoor.
Yeah. We did kind of do a quite extensive survey, documented, made for each of the various conditions.
I'll second Mr. Curry's motion.
Thank you.
Good.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
What was the abstention on the Planning Commission class five?
What was, I'm sorry.
On the Planning Commission vote sheet, there's an absence slash abstention?
Yeah, it's Ms. Ishii, and I was looking at that too, Ms. Smith, that's a good question, I'm trying to recall.
I, if I can jump in real quick, I called her yesterday and asked her, and she said it was a technical abstention due to the preliminary hearing procedure.
Oh, this was referred without a public hearing?
Yeah, which we're going to talk about shortly.
Yep.
All right.
So...
She said it was purely technical and had to do more with the process of the application as opposed to the content, which she said was put together very well.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Curry, for figuring that out, yeah. And that's, like I said, we'll be talking about that separately, but that's not Mr. Ryan's concern here, so.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to the final public hearing this evening, zoning ordinance amendment. Just wish you don't have anything on this one.
I'll just go ahead and give...
Speak. Yeah.
Go ahead. Give a, just a brief intro, just first and foremost, say that this is a public hearing to amend existing ordinance, section 17055 of the Rep. Hanahan County Code, part of the zoning ordinance. And a public hearing was advertised pursuant to Code of Virginia 1522204, and the Planning Commission reviewed and considered this ordinance amendment, actually, they are putting forward this ordinance amendment for consideration in the board, and have recommended that forward to you for approval by vote of seven to zero earlier this year. The ordinance amendment that you are to consider is attached and in the preamble tracks the various introduction by the Planning Commission and eventual vote and recommendation by the Planning Commission. The change is rather simple, is to two small sections of 17055, and this section of the zoning ordinance deals with applications for special permits and special exceptions, you just heard, and consider two special exceptions. And the ordinance has previously required a multi-step approach at the Planning Commission by which, if an application is submitted more than sixteen days before the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission will have it on the agenda as a preliminary review. And then, following that, they will set it for public hearing, may set it for public hearing, and then referral on to the Board of Supervisors, or if it's a SUP, to the BZA. What this language does, as shown on the screen, is it basically makes it clear that once an application is deemed complete by the zoning administrator, she will refer it to the deciding body for public hearing, period. That, or to the, to the Planning Commission for public hearing, period. And then, the Planning Commission will consider that, possibly ask for more information, and make a referral on to the deciding body. There will always be two public hearings for special use permit, special exception, one at the Planning Commission, one at the deciding body, and there won't be a preliminary review. So, this could speed things up from before, because before, there would be guaranteed to be two Planning Commission meetings at which an application is considered, followed by a meeting, at least one meeting at the BZA or BOS. This could be moved forward in just one meeting at the Planning Commission now, and one meeting at the US or BZA.
And I would just put, I would just put, thank you for the summary, just put finer points on it. Ms. Smith asked a good question about the vote on the Ryan application against it, and that was Ms. Ishii, and really, her consistent opposition to the Planning Commission moving things out of a preliminary review on to either Board of Supervisors or BZA was the reason, and the Ryan application, why she said no. And so, the bottom line takeaway here is, we'll no longer have a situation where even a no-brainer, straightforward application comes to the Planning Commission under a preliminary review, and we set it forward without a public hearing, and that was a concern. So, Mr. Curry's right that it might speed things up, but I will tell you that the Planning Commission was in some cases for applications that were straightforward, even under the preliminary review step, sending them on, sometimes with a recommendation for approval, sometimes with no recommendation, because there was frankly, nothing else needed in the application, particularly for things like very straightforward, non-controversial tour, uh, tour of some applications. So, it will, it will speed things up in many cases, but most importantly, the Planning Commission will always have a public hearing now on any type of special exception or use permit application. So, I think that's, that's good news, and it's sensible cleanup of this kind of odd process that we've been living with for some time.
And I do want to add that the board members may be aware or recall that there is a time limit after which the, an application for an SUP or SE is heard by the board, that a decision must be made, board or BZA must be made. But there is no time limit for when it's heard by the Planning Commission. And we've seen some special exceptions take a long time to get through the Planning Commission as the applicant works through their application with the Planning Commission, adds information, goes back and forth, but once it lands on the board or BZA agenda, you've got ninety or a hundred and twenty days to finalize. But the first time that the Planning Commission will see this, it'll be a public hearing. See an application, it'll be a public hearing. That's the departure from what's happening now.
So, is this a cleanup of sorts, getting in sync with Virginia Code, or...
The Code of Virginia is not this, this is more structured than the Code of Virginia. The Code of Virginia basically allows the Planning Commission to provide input at the Board of Supervisors' public hearing or the BZA public hearing, if they so wish. So, this formalizes the process and says the Planning Commission will have a public hearing, and then make a recommendation on to the deciding body afterwards, while the Code of Virginia just enables them to have a seat at the table, just like any other citizen, during your public hearing. But historically, this body, this county has decided to have the Planning Commission take a bigger role in SUPs and SEs, and I think it makes sense, given the interest in the community on how this, how it develops.
I just wonder that, we're thinking it's going to speed things up, but it seems to me, if we're going to be advertising everything, instead of just having a preliminary review and then passing on, you know, applications that don't seem to have much opposition or muster much opposition, that then what might come in and be able to be heard in relatively short order due to advertising requirements may actually create a delay that we don't foresee.
The sixteen days, and this, this came up during one of the Planning Commission meetings, as we talked about, the sixteen days, if you look at the calendar, that would guarantee time to advertise in the newspaper. So, if the application is complete sixteen days in advance of the Planning Commission, the zoning administrator will be able to place the notices in the newspaper for the public hearing for that first meeting, that it shows up on the Planning Commission's agenda. And so, that, that'll be advertised, that'll come up. Now, if it's a slam dunk, the Planning Commission could hear from the public and move it on to the deciding body right then. If the application maybe is complete, but there are some questions, and there's some back and forth with the applicant, the Planning Commission could ask for additional information, and then use that information together with what they received from the public, put that together, and then make a recommendation at some subsequent meeting to the deciding body. What it does, what none of this says is, when it goes to the deciding body, does it come for a preliminary review or go to a public hearing right away? That would be a function of that deciding body and your rules, unless you codified it here, which it's not right now.
And then, is the genesis of this then, if it's not driven by the Code of Virginia, and it's not on our cleanup sheet for what we've requested the Planning Commission work on, is the genesis of this then from the Planning Commission itself?
Yes. And the Code of Virginia allows ordinance modifications to come one of three ways, at the direction of the Board of Supervisors, at the request of the Planning Commission, or actually, an application from a citizen. So, this is that second door. And I think it was through frustration from some Planning Commission members that they were being asked to make a recommendation on a application without knowing what the neighbors think, which, you know, they can do from a technical perspective, but if all the neighbors think it's a terrible idea, it puts the Planning Commissioner in a tough spot. So, I think they felt, interpreting what I've heard, they felt that having that citizen input baked in at the first meeting, at least they'll know, and people will have a right to provide that input. Now, they'll always have a right to provide input at the deciding body as well.
But it just, yeah, it's basically, we would have situations, like I was saying earlier, and Ms. Smith, you described again, where you did an application, it's complete, nobody's complaining about the potential special use, we'll just use a tour or storm as an example, and it's a preliminary review, and nobody's concerned about it, and then you have members of the Planning Commission saying, well, why don't we just move this on? Because it's going to be a public hearing anyway. Then you have other members of the Planning Commission saying, well, you know, what's our purpose? Shouldn't we be hearing from the public? And I think the answer to that latter question is, yeah. And so, this extra step was basically creating a situation over and over again where some people on the Planning Commission were comfortable just moving it along, other people were not. And frankly, I think it, it didn't look great to applicants who see, who themselves felt like, hey, you know, I provided everything, I'm here to answer your questions, and then there'd be conflict within the Planning Commission itself, and you'd see a vote sheet like you were just asking about, where on a straightforward application, where there were really no deep questions, someone said, boy, no, because they didn't like the idea that we're moving it ahead without having a public hearing. So, to kind of cut to the chase, this was a solution that Mr. Light, you know, he was kind of able to kind of dive into the ordinance and figure out one way to approach this, and Mr. Curry was very helpful in kind of finalizing this language. So, it just, it streamlined, every, streamlines the whole Planning Commission process, and I think it, I think applicants now, if this is adopted, will know what to expect, that is, the zoning officer says, okay, your application's complete, the next thing that's going to happen is you have a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and after that, as Mr. Curry said, the deciding body, whether it's the Board of Supervisors or the BZA, will also hold a public hearing, because oftentimes, applicants would stand there and they'd say, well, this is a preliminary review, so you're going to come back next month for a public hearing. And that can be very confusing, not only for the applicant, but also, not confusing, but at least sort of disruptive on the Planning Commission. So, it's just, it seems like a sensible way to just clean up the whole process.
Any other questions, or do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make an motion to adopt the provided ordinance amending 170-55 of the Rep. Hanahan County Code.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I would just like to say that I think that apropos our previous conversations about, and I know this is sort of a curveball, but the legislative actions that the BZA has been, that has, the authority that they have, I think that, you know, moving towards streamlining the process overall is a generally healthy thing to do. And so, I feel positive about this, and I think the more public input we can have regarding all applications, the better.
I agree.
Well said.
Are the fees that we're collecting for applications sufficient to offset any additional advertising that we may incur?
What is our fee now for these?
Seven hundred, nine hundred.
That should do it.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll just have to keep an eye on that.
We could charge less if the Rep. Hanahan News would print the notices for free.
I think we've tried that before.
Oh, have you not opened a public hearing?
I think we did, and then we closed it, didn't we?
No.
No, we haven't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for catching that. Please hold on to vote. I am now going to open the public hearing, zoning ordinance amendment, 170-55 applications. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up.
I do.
Yes, me.
Shoes up.
Shoes required.
I think, Carolyn Butler, I live in Piedmont, I just have one question about this. I think a lot of people really do not read Rep. Hanahan News, I'm sorry, so, but I don't get it, most people I know don't get it, so we don't know. You need to... It needs to be advertised somewhere else, like maybe posted in the post offices or Rapnet or someplace so that more people are aware of these hearings and I think you'd have more people here. That's just a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Are they posted in the courthouse here?
The meeting, the meeting agendas are, which would include the public hearings, but not necessarily the same timing as when the Code of Virginia requires us to put it in the newspaper, which is two successive weeks, where the second week is no further than 21 days away from the date of the hearing and no closer than five days away from the hearing. But we could devise a way to at least list on the posting board upcoming public hearings. I have done that on the, on board docs for upcoming public hearings, so information is, is available for review.
Does the website make any?
We can, we could do something on the website. I don't know if people look at that either.
Well, you know, there are many people that do not have this internet.
Yeah.
So I know a lot of people that don't have any communication and it's somehow we need to reach these people. If this were happening in, in my neighbor and I didn't know, I'd be really kind of upset. So somehow we need to, and everybody goes to the post office just to meet people.
Right.
Maybe I'll have some other idea, but I, I know my aunt doesn't have internet, she doesn't watch TV, and she doesn't get the paper because she's protesting. So I have to inform her, but if I'm not getting it, just not complaining, just bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Carolyn. Do you want to make a comment? That's okay. Let us know who you are and.
Shawna Valmerk, Wakefield. I'm just.
I'm sorry, could you say that?
Shawna Valmerk, Wakefield District.
Point of order, please direct your comments to the board.
Oh, I apologize. Just to, I hear what's being said, but I think part of the, I mean, I love, I read the newspaper every week, but I think part of the onus is on the citizens too, you know, to, to know what's going on in the community. I mean, if you don't have access to, I mean, internet access, access is an issue, of course, but if you're refusing to have internet access and not read the paper and not be informed, that's also on you as a, as a community member to have that onus and be involved or be not involved, you know? That's, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
One good thing that's been happening with, with the whole planning is that the process that's going on in the office has gotten better and better as time goes on. So when people bring things to the planning commission, they're much more complete, much more accurate, shall we say, than had, they've been in past, past years. So things are getting better from that point of view. So that's where the preliminary idea was to iron out all the things that weren't happening. And so a lot more has happened before it gets before planning. So I think this is a good step to, actually non-step, to take out that preliminary and just keep tightening the things that are getting done on the administrative level before they get before the planning commission. Also, talking about how to get the public to know what's going on, plain old ordinary signs, a sign on a property that says, planning commission meeting according to section so-and-so about such and such, that gets posted so that the neighbors can drive by and see it, is not an unusual thing in a lot of other places. I'm not wishing that Mr. Curry has to go out and put something in the ground. Hey, you might like the drive. But, you know, think, think about the fact that something like that might be as good as anything to let the world.
We were requiring that, it's not happening. It's not included in the ordinance, and Ms. Summers and I have discussed getting that going and as good an impetus as anything to get it invigorated.
I think that, that we ought to make that a requirement, that we, you know, that's, that's for us to do. We need to make sure that that's done.
The board codified that in your fireworks ordinance, for example, and moved through that with your secondary road planning. And so I think it makes sense to do a similar temporary step in sign, this property's under consideration for a special use, special exception. Please, details are available.
I remember at one time, and people were complaining to me that there wasn't a sign up there, so I called up here, and it's when, she didn't put it up, and Ms. Kaiser was the county administrator, zoning administrator, and she, she assured me that it was up. And I drove up there and looked, and it was, and it was parallel with the highway.
So nobody could see it.
Nobody could see it.
Yeah. So anyway, think about that more. And I think that this is a good direction to be going. I think it's going to work out better in the long run and, and make it more smooth for the, the public that has to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think tell a neighbor would work very well if we get those signs up.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing? All right. Seeing no hands on Zoom, I'll close the public hearing.
And I will remake that motion. I move to adopt the provided ordinance amending 170-55 of the Rappahannock County Code.
Mr. Whitson, you still awake over there?
I'm here. I will, I will second, and, you know, these queen is going to 2:00 in the morning. You'll love yourself.
No, I've really tried. All right.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
We have a motion, a second. You have further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
An aye also.
Okay. Madam Chair is a point of order. What exactly do we need to do to make sure that those signs happen every application?
Well, we have to design and manu, or find, buy signs.
We had signs. I mean, we, we used to do this. We were doing it for a little while.
That was before the great discontinuity, so much was lost.
But you're on it and do we have a?
Yeah.
In-your-mind ETA when we can?
I mean, it didn't take me long to make, get the other ones, maybe a month or so.
All right. We're moving into the public comment period for the evening. And this can be on any topic. Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Name and district, please.
My name is Judy DeSarno, and I am a resident of the Hampton District, the Town of Washington, and a citizen of the county. I am here to support the application to bring the 3.1 acres into the town of Washington. I think it is a complete win for the county. A small amount of land to be put to very good use for all the residents of this county and perhaps even more, some more revenue for the county. I am a bit perplexed by some of the odd additions in the draft amendment. That, one being, what, the re, asking the town to give a sort of blanket consent to a realignment of lots or however it's put. It's not something I would oppose. I mean, my guess is the town wouldn't oppose it. But it sounds like if you don't do this, then we won't do that. And I just think that the perception of that is not good. And this, this is not something that should be in this kind of agreement. It has nothing to do with bringing three acres into the town. I don't quite understand why there would be a prohibition on bringing further land into the county for 10, from the county into the town for 10 years. My, both the comprehensive plan for the county and for the town talk about development on the edges. We have a sewer system and we have water, and we know that we need more housing in the county. I'm not talking about workforce housing, I'm simply talking about housing. And I don't under, we have one property for sale right now in the town where half of the property is in the town and the last two lots of the property are in the county. To say for 10, 10 years, we couldn't bring that piece in or make application, and I don't know that the owner has. I'm just, I'm, I'm talking about why that makes no sense to me. There would be a hearing, you could say no. If somebody came forward to bring a larger development in, I don't think the town would like it either. But I do hope that you move forward with bringing this, the land into the, into the town. As I say, I think it's a complete win for all of the citizens of the county, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Not seeing anyone in the courtroom. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak?
And if you're on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand.
Not seeing any Zoom hands. We'll close the public comment period. All right. We are now moving into old business, town boundary line change request. Mr. Whitson, do you want to tee this one up?
I'll get started, and I appreciate Ms. DeSarno coming out and off-premise those comments during public comment, they're very useful. Okay, I'd, I'd like, if the board would indulge me, I'd just like to spend about five minutes and go through the document label. This is, this is draft LA agreement between Town of Washington and Towne, dated June 27, 2022. And admittedly, I've, I've been away out of the country for work, and so I conveyed this to my edits to a final draft, which I'm grateful she passed along to Mr. Goff. And so this version reflects some of my edits, plus some other edits that I believe came through deliberations between Mr. Goff and the town attorney and Mr. Foot, who's representative of Mr. Ockery. So I think this is a good, good place to start. And for whatever it's worth, I'll just kind of lay out quickly, I think I paid for, I'd like to end up in this document, and I, I do think we should just move this tonight on to the town. So I'll just give you a fair warning, then I'll, I'll put forward a motion to move this up to the town once I get these edits on, we can talk about it, concerns you all have. If someone's willing to second the motion.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm a little remiss to take this up without the county attorney being here. We don't have the benefit of counsel this evening.
It's true. And without him here, we don't know if he would be at the next meeting that we scheduled for.
And I, I can tell you that Mr. Goff was integral in creating the document before you. Now, if you make changes to that, then I think you definitely want to have his input before you moved him on.
And I certainly understand that things come up and not everyone can be at every meeting. I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but this is a legal document that we are talking about that has far-reaching ramifications for the county. And we're talking about making changes to it and bringing it to the town when, when, frankly, I think the town should be bringing us the document and that we have put in more than our fair share of work on this document. And I'm really reluctant to take this up without the benefit of legal counsel being present. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Whitson. I, I was not, I did not know if you were aware that county attorney is not present in the room this evening.
Yeah, you make a fair point. What I was, what I was saying, though, is that my understanding, if I can confirm this, is that what we have in front of us reflects edits from the county attorney. So if we work off of this document, at least in my view, and we're not, we're not sending this on for final approval, we're sending it on for the town's consideration, and the county attorney has made all of the edits reflected here, I'm pretty comfortable with that because this is long before, or somewhat before any public hearing would be held, either at the county or the town level. And so we can, we can, you raise a good point. If I could just go through the document, because we have it here.
Sure. There's, there's two shadings on the document we have in front of us, Mr. Whitson, and some of them are blue and some of them are yellow. Is there a differentiation there as to who is proposing these edits?
Well, I did put the edits in, so Mr. Curry probably can explain the different colors, if you want to do that, Mr. Curry, just for, just so we're working off of a common understanding of what's in here.
Yeah, this, this tracking was from Mr. Goff. The yellow is, notes, additions to the document that was previously provided by Mr. Foot. Strike through, of course, is removing words and yellow is adding them. You've seen in other documents where it's been underlined in town. So yellow means it's added. Blue is simply calling attention to a margin comment, no changes to the text and just a margin comment that I added based on input that I heard, but we did, was not incorporated into the document. It was just a margin comment to draw attention for discussion today because it was only a couple of board members who brought that forward and didn't want to change the document.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. So I'm, I'm ready to go through the document, but, you know, Ms. Smith raises a good point. I, I had lost track of the fact that Mr. Ockery was not there. It's, I don't know, any other board members feel strongly about it. I, I take her point, and I don't, I don't want to create consternation. We move this along without her trying to input, so maybe here from my other colleagues on this point, how we should proceed. We work through the document now, I mean, tell me what you want to do. I mean, I'm, I'm here and ready to do the work.
Has Mr. Goff reviewed what we have in front of us? Yes. He and I sat down together and finalized this after input from the other, from Mr. Foot, and to correct the numbers and, and incorporate the comments from your last meeting that came up on that draft version to get it to this point.
So if this document remains unchanged, his eyes will have already been on it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Which is right, which is my point. So with that, on page one, the, if you recall, the acreage was not correct in the draft we saw previously. Mr. Curry said, I think, in consult, am I correct, Mr. Curry, that the yellow highlights were a result of consultations with Mr. Foot and the town attorney?
Now, this, these corrections go back many months to when that first consultation happened.
Well, I recall the last time we looked at this, the acreage was not correct.
That's correct.
Very last, so that wasn't many months ago, it was like a month.
Yeah. It, it was wrong on the first one, and that was one of our initial comments, and now aligns with the plat that was provided.
Okay. So obviously that, the yellow highlights need to be incorporated in the final document, should be sent this out to the town for their consideration. R6, Mr. Curry, what was claimed here? I didn't have any comments on this.
This says entirely new paragraph, the Code of Virginia requires a plat to be put to record, and this simply says the town's going to do it. Well, I think it says the town's going to do it at the end, but it says that, that it has to be done because it's a, it's a requirement of the code.
And final page two, ordinance upon, right? That's an addition.
Right. Yep.
Okay. And then everyone recalls from our last meeting, on page, page three, this, the phrasing of this whole section, number two, was pretty confusing. I don't know if they're double negated or how it was phrased, but it was unclear whether we're talking about things that would be allowed or things that would not be allowed. You see the strike throughs, I, I think that it's. I, I think that it's now readable or more readable to, so that any person either on our board or otherwise, most importantly, members of the public actually can read the document and understand what, what would be allowed and not allowed. And so these strike throughs and the additional language highlighted, yellow should be in any final document we send to the town. It's my opinion, I've stated before, we, this boundary line adjustment is now before us for consideration before anything's been built on the other parcel that's fully within the town. And so it's my, it's my view that given the timing of this request for boundary line adjustment, given the fact that no citizen has a sense of what this overall development is going to look like and what effect it will have on, on that area of the county, I would be inclined to strike all number one, which is the provision called the dwellings on the, on the portion of that second corner parcel that would, that would through boundary line adjustment be pulled into the town. So I would say that item one, which is highlighted in light blue here, should be struck altogether. Fleamart did, I have no strong feelings about that. Perhaps the owner had a reasoning included that it seems like perhaps a, a low intensity use of the property. It seems odd though, it doesn't seem to fit with the other uses. So I'll just leave that for others to consider. Item 12, I have your amphitheater. There was, Ms. Diney raised a good question about noise. And it seems, and Mr. Curry can weigh in on this, that if, if this, if this portion of the corner parcel was pulled into the town, it appears that the town would require some kind of special use permit related to amplified sound or music. And so Mr. Curry must weigh in on that.
But the current zoning ordinance for the town, section one dash five dash five requires a special use permit for external amplified sound or music. Now, town zoning ordinance, like county ordinances, can change over time. So if you have a concern that the, this amphitheater might be too loud, at least now, the zoning ordinance, there would be a process to determine a permit for such external. Doesn't mean you couldn't try to put something in here, but you have to think about enforcement too. And if, if there is, if, if there's a condition that's kind of subjective included in a document like this, then you have to enforce it through the courts. I don't think that's a great plan into the eternity of future.
For, for discussing, I leave that alone. And then a big concern I had on page five, this, this relates to the removal of covenants. And the earlier drafts were very, very confusing in, in terms of the, the buildings to which the removal of covenants language was referring. And so I asked Ms. Diney to convey to Mr. Goff the need to make it clear to any layperson what, which buildings we're talking about. So this has now been clarified. Number one relates to, you'll see the parenthetical referring to what is now known as Street 88 Street. And the second referring to what is now known as the Washington Town Hall, how it for 85 K Street. Because the previous draft really was using sort of mixed references to the Town Hall and Corner Library. And it went to some misreported, for example, where I think it was that we're somehow talking about the county library or not. And so this, I think, at least makes clear which physical properties we're talking about in this, this section of the agreement related to removal of covenants. So I think this is, this is good on page five. I think it's now readable and understandable by anyone who might think this document up for leisure reading.
That's going to happen.
That life.
I think page nine, meals and lodging tax. I asked Ms. Diney about this column note because it's not consistent with what, or the column note itself was not consistent with my input on this particular provision. The column suggests removal of four meals and lodging tax revenue sharing with the town. And Ms. Diney explained to me, and I get the point, if you go back to the top of the document and look at uses that would be allowed, it seems that in that upcoming language, we're precluding a use that might generate that meals and lodging tax revenue. That said, I think it's worthwhile leaving this provision in here as it's written, a 50-50 split on the meals and lodging tax revenue generated from that parcel. Because I, I mean, I, it's frankly, although it seems like any such use would not be allowed, it's hard to say what might generate meals and lodging tax revenue. So I think this is just a protection for the county's financial interests. No matter how minor, I think we leave that in there, in my opinion. Page 10, and I think this is, Ms. Disarmo, my constituent, talked about this earlier. And, and here, this language really, I think, is important to include. And so basically it's starting to follow page nine, town shall not initiate nor shall support a petition or application filed by any party for any further boundary line adjustments. Court period of, or annexation seeking addititive to the town for a period of 10 years from the advent of the order. Above the exception that properties that require town waters or because of failing well or suckin' system may, maybe considered as an exception to this rule. Again, this just goes to protection for people, people out there who I've heard from for months who are concerned that this might be in some way leading to domino effect. It seems unlikely, but it's a protection. And of course, this exemption is, is important because we do know that there are some properties or in the town that are having difficulty or could have difficulty relating to wastewater treatment, water matters. So I think it's a reasonable of splitting errors. And then the next, the next part, seven. This is, this is a little confusing to me because on the one hand, we're, earlier in the document, called for removal of covenants on certain buildings that might have historical significance. But then yet, there was language in the agreement that said that, you know, this is, this is a historical district and the ARB rules within a town would still apply. And that seemed, those provisions, removing covenants on buildings and that still hold into ARB rules were conflict. And so I think Mr. Goff, Mr. Curry, in a consultation with Ms. Diney, worked out this addition, that some properties currently owned wholly owned by the town of Washington, the county of Rappahannock, shall be, shall be exempt from the provisions of this order for any use or purpose made of them by the governing bodies. And so this basically, this language now says that, consistent with the prior removal of covenants language, that ARB rules would not apply. I don't know if I summarized that correctly, Mr. Curry.
Yeah.
That was my intent.
The extension that wasn't made is that the ARB is part of their zoning ordinance, as is their historical, I forget what they call it. It's all within the zoning ordinance. Their zoning ordinance right now has a carve out for town owned properties. And so this would just simply add county owned properties to town owned properties in their zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And so what's good for the town is good for the county.
And then items eight and nine, I think we've talked about previously. And then I think that takes us for the most part through the document. And there's sort of an answered matter at the bottom of page 12. And that's all I have.
Mr. Whitson, if we could, while you're there, back to paragraph nine of article one, is there a typo there?
Maybe.
The town will agree to dismantle and relocate it, Town of Washington Memorial Park?
Oh, yeah.
Shouldn't be.
In fact, I mentioned Ms. Diney the other day. Yeah, it should be and relocate. Good idea, Mr. Curry.
I noticed that on the last version, but I figured.
Yeah, and I also have to be corrected. So the other page should be removed.
Yeah, and then, I mean, I don't know where some of these things came from. I know that I, I made reference to them. I think Mr. Goff has made reference to some of these things, Mr. Curry. I'll blame it on anybody I can, but some of this, I have no idea where it came from. But I know that it was Mr. Akri or his attorney that initially suggested some of this stuff.
Yeah, it, it, I think it's a really good question. And if I recall, it was last, I believe last August, almost a year ago, we saw an initial draft. And if, if I understand correctly, that initial draft was a product of Mr. Bennett, the Carter Town Attorney, the Zoniefestorator, working with Mr. Foot, turning to Mr. Akri. And I don't know for sure, but I believe Mr. Goff might have been involved in those early discussions. And so at least the one, one thing I know originated at that time was the proposed language related to removal of covenants on those two buildings that were part of a real estate swap. Those are very good to get a lot for, but then I do.
I, I wasn't on the board when it happened though.
Yeah, that all originated last summer. So that language at least has been floating around for almost a year.
I think they swapped it during the Jefferson administration.
Just before you were added.
It's very appealing. But yeah, I mean, it's obviously been going back and forth a bit. But I, you all know my position on additional residential blocks before anyone has seen anything built on the other property. I think that's a reasonable protection. So that's been floating around for some months. And other than that, I think the bones of this document actually existed for almost a year.
Thank you for going through that, Mr. Whitson.
There is, there's one final addition linked to the, the section up front that was referenced, and that is that the town will bear the cost of recording the necessary plat meets and bounds. Somebody has to do it. It won't be a big cost, but it was, let's make it clear so there's no confusion when we get to the end of the road.
I think this is a cleaner document than we had on the sixth of June, I believe it was.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, I mean, I, I have difficulty understanding certain sections of it, the way they are written. And I think that Mr. Goff and Mr. Curry and Ms. Diney deserve credit for wrestling with it. And I, I put some time into it. I think it's much better, it's readable, it's clear. You know, the substance of it, and that's for the town government to wrestle with and moving forward to them. But I think at least anyone on the street now can understand what's in here and what it means. So that's good.
Any other input?
I, I just go back to one of the original premises in asking for a lot of these things, which we asked actually the town for, but we just sort of got a response, well, it's that way because we say it's that way. And that is the documents that show that they can't provide water and sewer service to folks that are not within the town. We did make that a, a request early on. And to my, my memory, we didn't ever receive that information. We just sort of got a response that legal counsel says that is the case.
Yeah, and basically I'll tell you that, I don't know how long, it was six months ago, I put in a, I put in a FOIA request for the town to get the wastewater treatment bond documents and related materials. And those bond documents were voluminous to such an extent that they couldn't provide them in PDF or other electronic forms. So it's sort of a physical inspection type exercise. Frankly, I didn't go with you on, because to your point, it's a question we've asked, we've never really gotten a clear answer on it. But, you know, it's, they, the town, the town, and, I mean, I've asked the question, you've asked the question, other people have asked the question. They've taken a position that they're precluded from or are unwilling, whatever, whatever the answer is to extend sewer service or sewer and water service for residents outside the town. And I'm frankly kind of tired of asking the questions. So I haven't, I haven't done the additional work to dig through the bond documents.
It's my premise, Mr.
Someone else wants to do that, it's, go ahead.
Mr. Whitson, I, it's my premise, I mean, that they actually are furnishing water and sewer outside the town because they're furnishing it to the county complex here. And I have seen nothing yet that says that the town predates the county.
The charter is long before the county was chartered.
A town charter?
Yeah.
I haven't seen that, I've asked for it.
I'm sorry, yeah, 1796, I believe.
But they were, that was a town in Cobb River.
I don't know, that's true.
This is the county of Rappahannock, so it's, it's like apples and oranges or apples and.
There's Attorney General decision that is on point.
An Attorney General's opinion is not law. But it has the weight of law until it's decided by a court.
Sure, so you could, you could have a court try to sort that out with a precedent setting opinion, or you could just put it into a mutually binding agreement.
Well, that's, yeah, that's why some of this is here because we've had such a sinner relationship with certain segments of the town government for years. But I'm not going to mention that publicly.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Whitson, real quick, did you want to suggest that we remove the dwellings?
Yeah, everything, I, I mean, I don't.
Go ahead.
I don't know, if anyone's taking notes. But that, that was the purpose of my review, to tell you, I mean, again, to your point, Mr. Carney, earlier point, and acknowledging this, this concern about lack of legal counsel being present for this meeting, the document in front of us was reviewed by legal counsel, everything. And it was either inserted or approved by our legal counsel. And so working off of that legal counsel reviewed foundational document, I went page by page and told you where I think we should end up. And on that basis, including the removal of item one under allowed uses and, and all the other, all the other references I made page by page, I think we just move on and, and let the town consider it. We, our, our attorney has reviewed it. Our attorney has inserted everything into it that I just like.
Thank you.
From consensus perspective, I think I, I understand your perspective. I don't understand the consensus of the board. And I think that's where Mr. Carney is trying to drive this conversation.
Oh, so yeah, I was going to say that if, if you wanted, if you, I think I had heard you say that you wanted to take that out. And given that Mr. Goff has looked over this, I would feel comfortable taking that out, passing it along since we're not signing anything. And we'd send them this document, which we're not signing anything. And then they can chew over it and they're going to do, well, who knows what they'll do to it. And then at that point, it'll be obvious that if they send something back.
I agree.
Our county attorney will obviously, you know, that'll be a whole other thing we're going to have to deal with. But it sounded to me like the one.
It's an attorney review document. And as I mentioned earlier, all the queries will be recorded by the boards superiors of the Town of Washington. So yeah, I mean, that was, that was my, my one major change. Again, I don't know if anyone's taking notes, but I went through where I thought the column notes that were added by Mr. Goff. Also, our ballot should be incorporating what was sent to the town.
Well, sort of the way that I look at it also is that I've, I will think of other things. And when they mark it up and send it back, which I'm assuming that they will, there's going to be other things we're going to need to talk about.
Right, I, I, but I think what we send to them should be a clean document. That's my point.
Yep, and I agree.
That's why I went through page by page. We're not going to send on, or we shouldn't send on, in my opinion, a document reflecting track changes. We're simply, we need to send a clean document.
Yep, and I agree.
And that's why I went through my, my thoughts based on the column that's in Mr. Goff.
So is there consensus on this comment A1 of eliminating the dwellings as a allowable use?
Well, I think that takes it all back to a question I have for our legal counsel, which is that really, we can build all of these conditions into this document. But what is our recourse if there's issues with the way it's carried forward? What if things don't, things happen that are contrary to this document? Then are we looking at litigation? What are our resources? I think that's, I would really like to hear from our legal counsel. When we create a very convoluted document like this to accomplish something, what are the advantages and pitfalls of everything that we're working into it?
Yeah, I guess that's right because I'd hate to see us send a document that one or two of us have real heartburn with. or two of us have real heartburn with, and we just decide to change it after they've already looked at it, and we say, well, wait a minute, we forgot to add this, or.
Well, don't we reserve the right absolutely to do that?
Absolutely.
I mean, I would never be comfortable sending them something that I would, I mean, I I would only send this saying, we might change it completely, fully. I mean, that's my understanding. We're not signing anything. And so, if they come back to us, we would have that ability to ask Mr. Goff, hey, look at this. And he might say, whoa. And that could be something that we have not thought of, because that'd be something the town would do. And that can happen at any stage. So, I would like to reserve the right to change it absolutely at any moment.
Maybe we should let them know we have a draft prepared to send them once they send the language that we've requested regarding supplying water and sewer to only residents of the town.
We could do that in addition to, for instance, since we're not signing anything, we could send this and say, don't send it back until you have that language. And then that'll give them reason to send the language.
Well, I mean, except that that kicks it down the road another step, and we may get this back with no language, which is what we've got now. I I just, I don't know why we continue to push this when when the boundary adjustment is really a town issue, and we're accused of stalling, and here we are on the leading edge of it again.
Well, this is true. I mean, if you read the articles that were in the paper last week, it appears that there's not much support in the town council, so they really need to send us something. They know that we've got this draft. They could, they could kind of marry the two if they've got some language, and then send us back something for our attorney to review.
And the the town responded to the county letter on February sixth, twenty twenty-two, and that included the language shown on the screen, which was.
What about their interview language from just a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago?
I don't know. All I know is this is what they officially wrote to you regarding wastewater surface. So, I mean, it's not that they didn't answer. We might not like their answer, but this is their answer.
Right, which is that it's our attorney's opinion, but that doesn't mean that's what the documents say.
Well, this this isn't leaning on the bond documents at all, and they may have walked away from that explanation, or I don't know. But this is a different perspective of why they feel it's important, recognizing the fact that the there's been a suggestion that they would extend it to the voluntary fire department. Now, I can tell you just from a local government management perspective, the town is subsidizing the sewer system with their other taxes.
That's correct.
I would, if I'm in the town, I would not want to extend my sewer service outside the town and burden the town taxes to provide sewer outside the town. That doesn't make sense, and you would want to, you know, coincide. But they didn't say that either.
Well, I I think that we have a really good opportunity right here to do some really interesting things with, I don't know, I just think about the building projects, and I think about building a courthouse, and I think about, we have this moment here to get some, I what I think would be useful things done. I don't know, the relationship between the town and the county hasn't always been great, and.
I mean, I thought we were, you know, largely cordial in approving the walking path that they requested the other week, but then there's, you know, some not-so-nice descriptions of the way the county acts toward the town from town representatives. So, I I just, it's a very one-way street, and if y'all are willing to continue going down the one-way street, there's not a lot I can do about it. But on behalf of, you know, speaking as a county representative, we have spent a lot of time and effort and expense putting this together, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of goodwill. We get accused of wanting to treat this transactionally, when it's a big deal. That is a very, it may not look like it now, but that will be a very pivotable pivotal and valuable piece of property in the years to come. And yes, we should treat it very seriously. And to be accused of of being petty about it, when in my opinion, we're just doing our due diligence, and I've never spoken ill, and I still don't speak ill of the folks in the town, or the applicant, or the landowner. But at some point, I have to wonder, when will we get what we've requested as a county? When does the street go both ways?
Well, since we're in the middle of the process, I think it could turn into a two-way street. I think if we send them a document that we have no idea what they're gonna do to it, and at least keep it kind of moving forward, I think it sets out some parameters that are beneficial to us and are clearly beneficial to them. And I think maybe through just, you know, continuing dialogue, you know, maybe we can arrive at a good place. We're not signing anything. We're just saying, okay, let's continue this. Let's continue this discussion, because you're totally right in the sense that we've spent a lot of resources on it and time and energy. So, I just would, I think we've got other stuff I'd like to get done, so, you know, I think just moving it forward. And I don't think it would be such a terrible thing to say, you know, hey, don't send it back without that language. And then, you know, that'll give them maybe some impetus to say, okay, well, here, here's what we've done. Here's the language. Here's the bond agreement that says, hey, blah, 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 we can extend that.
I think what we'll learn is that the bond documents, and again, I I didn't go through them, but I think what we'll learn is bond documents don't say anything explicitly in this regard. If they did, we would have heard about it, I think. But it's, I mean, it's a reasonable request to include that, just so that there's a starting premise for this, this whole boundary line adjustment, which I do think that is still water and sewer.
I feel like we've done so much work at this point, and I don't know of any other changes. I mean, we passed it out for at least two months now. I'm ready.
Yeah, Mr. Curry, are you are you are you clear on, after my review, the column notes and the highlights of these, when I come down and turn it up to the document?
I'm clear where you come down on it. I'm not clear where the full body does, and would love to go through those comment sections one by one and say, accept them or not.
Correct.
As a as a consensus point.
Okay.
And so, the first is the dwellings. Is should dwellings be a permitted use on that property? And Mr. Woodson and Ms. Dunn have suggested they should not, and the current language that was born out of the earlier discussions, I think, is a sense of compromise, was, well, you can't do it now, but sometime in the future you can. So, this is all, this whole process is, two bodies have to come to the same place at the end of the day for anything to happen.
A dwelling would be allowed there now if it was in the county, correct?
It's commercial general, so it would be allowed.
So, no, it would not, especially.
Right, but it would be allowed by a special use, and what would the density be?
And I think part of the, or why this language started so convoluted was the conversation at your earlier meeting, that there was a thought that that maybe the board didn't want to see, the board would be okay with by right uses that are already allowed there now, but because you wouldn't have control over that future special use process, ceding it to the town, you aren't comfortable with that. And so, residential falls into that category.
It would still have a density requirement or restriction.
Whatever the town does, they could do PUD.
I mean, if it was in the county, it was still.
Yeah.
Even with a special use permit or or special exception, we would have a density requirement.
Like multifamily or whatever.
We could say that it would not be, it could not be any more than what would be allowed under the county's zoning ordinance.
Well, and this just says six dwelling units.
That's not allowed currently under the counties.
It's not, it's not allowed.
No, probably multifamily wouldn't be able to do that many.
So, we could just, I mean, if it's a sticking point, we could limit it to what it would be limited to under the county.
Sure, you can put anything in there. Yeah, sure. But I think if it's one or two, I think it's the same, the same, none. Right, for the for the practical purposes.
But it looks good.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it looks like we're meeting them in the middle of the road somewhere.
So, everybody comfortable with that? It makes sense?
Yeah, that makes, yeah, yeah.
Well, and I know a lot of folks like to quote, you know, pushing development toward the village and the town, villages and town, but the second part of that is that we do recognize that that should occur within the current existing zoning designations. So, it recognizes that part of the comprehensive plan as well.
So, it's aligned with the maximum permitted number by pursuant to the county zoning density?
Right.
That sounds good.
Yeah. So, flea markets, yes or no?
I don't have a problem with it. A flea market may bring some money in little side business selling food. We get meals and lodging tax.
Maybe.
Going back, going back to one, what is, what?
The the number.
I mean, what, where do you end up?
The number would be restricted to that which would be allowed today by the county's zoning density. I'll make that more eloquent than that. Does that make sense? So, for three-point-whatever acres, you can do certain density based on commercial general.
Under a special use, though?
Yes.
Do we know what that density is?
Can.
Wouldn't be much without water and sewer.
Right. I mean, I'm not gonna agree that unless I know what we're talking about.
With, there is no density maximum in commercial general, but if it does, if it's on conventional septic, which it wouldn't be, it'd be one acre. Let me look at.
G one, or G G one, or?
Yeah. Well, that that would be townhouse, but if it's multifamily and apartment, it could be more. You might be better off referencing a number, quite frankly.
Yeah.
Either zero or a small number.
I just, I mean, I mean, my position is, we we don't know what, except for the property, we don't know what the eighteen housing units, I mean, I think the town planning commission, the town ARV, the super job, trying to kind of shape with the property owner, how that whole place is gonna look. But nothing, we don't, other than drawings and concept plans, we don't know how that corner or how that whole property is gonna look. And so, it's my position that if the property owner wants to find one of those now before anybody has a sense of what's going to be built there, it is only reasonable to say, okay, well, I mean, we're not gonna agree that more houses, if we don't know what the houses are already approved are gonna look like, and we're effectively gonna have that that corridor through the county and that that transcends the town from from two eleven. So, that was, that's where it was coming from. It's just, we're basically agreeing, we would be agreeing to additional housing before we know what we have ones are gonna prove by town.
With eliminating it from this draft sent for consideration would very quickly allow the board to understand how important it is to the town and to the owner that residential be there.
Which is.
Perhaps they agree with you.
And I I don't think that, well, I'm not gonna predict how the town council is gonna respond, but, I mean, my position has been clear for quite a long time, and I and I agree, that's a the perfect way to look at it. I mean, we're sending a document for review, so.
Plus, we can.
I'd say we strike it.
We can always go up if they.
Yep.
If we want.
Yep.
It's easier to go that way than the other way, so we can just say zero.
Remove.
Remove.
Just remove it.
Yep. Flea market? Okay, keep it in?
Leave it in there and and maybe, I mean, we get to the public hearing phases, maybe we learn more about that.
Yep.
I don't think we need to talk about flea markets tonight.
Oh, come on.
And so, probably no need to further condition outdoor amphitheaters. I would caution against it, the subjective noise, if there's already zoning in place in the town.
Yeah.
Okay. I agree with you that we should leave meals and lodging in. I think that's it.
That is it.
All right. Do you have that, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and put forward a motion that we prepare the track changes in this document consistent with our discussion this now, set this on to.
The attorney is not here, so it's it's very challenging to try to engage when we're missing some very integral parties.
Any other discussion?
I mean, we were accused, several of us were accused of trying to stymie this whole thing, and yet nobody shows up on their side. So, I don't know what to do. I I guess to show good faith and that I love everybody, I think we should go ahead and send this over to the town.
Are we gonna include the addition of language that we want to see what precludes the town from supplying water to folks that?
Yeah, I mean, I can just be an excerpt of the language. I'm sure it can't be on every page of a luminous document.
Correct.
Just put that in the letter when we send it over.
And tell them that I specifically believe that they're already are furnishing water and sewer outside the town.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
So, is that built into the motion?
To add your question.
So, I'll I'll.
Amend.
I'll expand the motion, getting a clear request that they they have language to the document regarding regarding the provision of water and sewer outside of town, and what we preclude, I'm convinced. So, I mean, I think we're beating that at worst, or we already, Mr. Curry pointed out that, like, that's what we're gonna see again, but I think it's a worthwhile request, so.
Ben, you?
I will amend my second.
Okay.
To include that.
Friendly amend.
Friendly amend. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
What did we actually vote on, misty-firm the language?
We're sending the document without the the.
The track changes.
With the track changes, as amended tonight.
The requirement that they send us an excerpt from page three hundred and eighty-seven or whatever it is, showing the reason why they can't.
Extend.
Extend the water and sewer to another property outside the town.
Yes, sir. All right, did you get the vote? I don't know.
I I you just asked for those in favor. I don't know that you finished.
Any opposed?
I'm not sure I know the vote, then.
Okay. Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'll abstain for lack of legal counsel, when I really think we should have the benefit of legal counsel.
Thank you very much.
This is four to zero one.
Yes. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No four.
Mr. Woodson, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you for bearing with me, and thanks, our group, for going over to them.
Get some sleep.
Get some rest.